I'm going to call the Tuesday, June 3rd, Manistee City Council meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
By the allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle, can you please take your role? Mayor Kenny?
Here.
Councilmember Hornball?
Here.
Mayor Pro Temzary?
Here.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Here.
Councilmember Gustin?
Here.
City manager?
Here.
City attorney?
Here.
DPDW director?
Ed Updike?
Finance director?
Here.
Public safety director?
Here.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Before we move on, tonight we'll be appointing people to our various boards and commissions. We did get some applicants that are not listed. I'd like to go through those now. For the DDA, we have applicant Barry Lynn of 432 Fourth Street, Manistee. Sarah Spore, 325 First Street, Manistee. Valerie Berkstrom, 1224 Treda Trail, Manistee. For the Parks and Beautification Commission, we have Mark Tomaszewski, 106 Temerock Street, Manistee. For the Brown Field Redevelopment Authority, we have Clinton McGyven Corpus of 5480 South Lake Shore Drive, Lexington, Michigan. The Ramsdale Governing Authority, we have Brian Garcia at 2374 Aitkins Road, Manistee, Michigan. And for the ZVA, we have Craig Schindelbeck at 420 Cedar Street. Those are the applicants that are not listed on the meeting agenda. That will be under consideration. Next, we'll move on to citizen comments and the agenda-related items. This is the person in need if anyone in attendance would like to comment on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone who'd like to comment on tonight's agenda? Sign off, and we'll move on to the consent agenda. All agenda items march with an asterisk or are on the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approving the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include: approval minutes, approval payroll, cash balance report, notification regarding scheduling a special meeting, notification regarding next work session, consideration of Manistee County Humane Society tag days, consideration of VFW buddy poppy sales, and consideration of annual forest festival activities. Is there a motion to approve consent agendas?
I'll make a motion, the council will take action to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hornball, supported by Councilmember Whitlock, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion, concerns? Michelle, can you please take the roll? Councilmember Hornball?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Temzary?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Gustin?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. We have no unfinished business. New business. Consideration of introducing ordinance Chapter 270 Housing Commission amendments. The initial housing commission ordinance was drafted in 1966. At that time, and based upon the ordinance, it was a responsibility of the city council to fix compensation for employees of the housing commission. More recently, the state of Michigan has subsequent laws that make it the responsibility of the council-appointed housing commission to set employee compensation. This ordinance has been reviewed and supported by the council ordinance committee. As an ordinance, two separate readings are required. If this ordinance is introduced at this time, it could be adopted at the next regular meeting. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, the council will take action to introduce an ordinance amending Chapter 270 Housing Commission.
Support.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hornball, supported by Mayor Pro Temzary, to introduce the ordinance amending Chapter 270 Housing Commission. Is there any discussion on this? Sign off, Michelle, can you please take the roll? Mayor Pro Temzary?
Yes.
Councilmember Gustin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hornball?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Next, we want to take consideration of introducing ordinance Chapter 289 Parks and Beautification Commission amendments. The Parks and Beautification Commission has passed a motion to amend Chapter 289, removing the language that chair is required to be a resident of the city. All Parks and Beautification Commissioners will still be required to own property or own a business or profession having a licensed business location within the city. This ordinance has been reviewed and supported by the council ordinance committee. As an ordinance, two separate readings are required. If this ordinance is introduced at this time, it could be adopted at the next regular meeting. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, the council will take action to introduce an ordinance amending Chapter 289 Parks and Beautification Commission.
Support.
I have a motion by Councilmember Gustin, supported by Councilmember Hornball, to approve introducing and changing the ordinance. Is there any discussion? Sign off, can you please take the roll? Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Councilmember Gustin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hornball?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Temzary?
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Consideration of introducing new ordinance, Chapter 663 fireworks. City council discussed the creation of a new ordinance to limit fireworks being discharged within the city of Manistee. No person shall ignite, discharge, or use commercial fireworks in the city between the hours of 11:00 p.m. and 8:00 a.m. This provision shall not preclude a person from igniting, discharging, or using consumer fireworks within the city of the day preceding, the day of, or the day after a national holiday, consistent with Act 256, except between the hours of 1:00 a.m. and 8:00 a.m. on those days. This ordinance has been reviewed and supported by the council ordinance committee. As an ordinance, two separate readings are required. If this ordinance is introduced at this time, it could be adopted at the next regular meeting. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, the council will take action to introduce the new ordinance, Chapter 663 fireworks.
Support.
I have a motion by Councilmember Gustin, supported by Councilmember Hornball, to introduce the new ordinance. Is there any discussion?
Yes. One thing during the ordinance meeting that we had and didn't discuss was when somebody shoots off a firework, that the remnants of the fireworks be deposited in their own property, rather than going all over on people's throats in yards. That's one thing that we missed.
Councilmember Whitlock, I think we're okay with that because that is state law. Whether it's in our ordinance or not, that is a state law requirement. If someone allowed that to occur, shot a bottle rocket off it and ended up on their neighbor's roof and just burned a hole in the roof, they could be cited for a state civil crash.
Even if they were within the correct timeframe, they still could be cited.
And how, one other question, additional question to that. The, again, remnants, even if it didn't spark a fire, bottle rockets in somebody's yard, on the house, again, bushes, how was that handled?
It would be handled on a complaint basis and the police department would dispatch out there to address that particular issue.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Yes, my feelings on this have not changed, my stance that this is just too broad, too many hours. And I think, I believe, Chief Botman, you said in order for you to write a ticket or whatever, you have to observe it, you just...
Yes, ma'am.
Not even if somebody shoots it off, it lands in somebody's bushes, it's still just a complaint, there's really no action that our police can really take.
Now, another question. The fines for this, the first one's a hundred dollars, they're treated as misdemeanors, correct? Chief?
They're not misdemeanors, they're civil crimes.
Civil one crimes, okay, sorry about that. Okay.
Civil crimes and violence.
And then the third would be?
Just two.
Just two?
Five, eight, five, eight.
If we, if we discovered that we had a person that was giving us that kind of trouble, we would go and ask for misdemeanor or if they're arrested, charged, we would take that and then charge them before a judge.
So, we would put them in jail, or just keep additional fines?
Typically, what occurs is a misdemeanor case, I know we issued them a ticket, we force them to come up front with a judge. There are times, we have the discretion, of course, in a misdemeanor to put someone in jail, if we could, but our normal protocol would be if a person, say, ignored the tickets, they got a couple tickets, maybe we'd give them a misdemeanor ticket, and probably could ignore someone, it might well be a trip to jail. I don't really expect to see that happen. I don't expect to see that kind of problem yet, too.
Okay.
If someone was a neighborhood person who didn't care about someone else's quality of life, he certainly could give themselves a trip to the county.
Okay. In the last couple of years, have we had a big problem with fireworks down the beaches, in the neighborhoods?
We've done a really nice job here in the Forest Castle, which is when we typically have fireworks issued at the beach, we're marking that as a fireworks free zone because it's all public property, people noticing the public coming in. And we may have written four or five tickets in the last couple of years, it was rare. People have been really good about it. We get a lot of noise complaints on the Fourth of July, later on, in the evening, when a person, it's allowed, so it hasn't been an enforcement issue, a lot of them for us. But it does generate a lot of phone calls after dispatch out of its holiday, if it's happening, not holidayed throughout the year, there's really not much of an issue for us.
So, the beaches are prohibited from shooting off fireworks down there?
The beaches are public property, the law allows you to do them on private property, any home property, or with permission for the property to ourselves. Steps on, or so long, or if family came over, you know, if you shoot fireworks in your yard, it wouldn't be a problem, but they couldn't go to the Riverwalk, the parks, the beaches, if you shoot fireworks down, we would, we'd mess it up.
And that includes all public property, so all of Dunn's Park area, all of Fifth Avenue Beach area, are all covered in that portion of the statute?
That's year round, okay.
Thank you, chief.
Any other discussion? Can you please take the roll? Councilmember Gustin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hornball?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Temzary?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
No.
And Councilmember Whitlock?
No.
Motion approved. Consideration of introducing ordinance 692 weeds. City staff has been working to amend how Chapter 692 weeds is enforced. Based on this experience, the Department of Public Works felt there was a more efficient way to enforce the weed ordinance. This ordinance has been reviewed and supported by the council ordinance committee. As an ordinance, two separate readings are required. If this ordinance is introduced at this time, it could be adapted at the next regular meeting. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, the council will take action to introduce an ordinance amending Chapter 692 weeds.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hornball, supported by Councilmember Whitlock, to introduce the ordinance. Is there any discussion? I'm reading through the changes, it looked like it was more or less just paring it down.
Really changing the dynamics of how we look at weed enforcement. In the past, the weed enforcement was done, if I can go back here real quick, on May 20th, June 20th, July 20th, August 20th. And those were the key dates that the Department of Public Works director would drive around, have a list generated, and go around town, looking for that. The change we're making right now is we're getting away from those four times a year. And when we're telling property owners that if your vegetation is higher than 10 inches any given time of the year, then you are in violation of this, and potentially could be receiving a notice from the city asking you to cut your grass, weeds, or there could, the city could come forward and do that cutting at a much higher rate. So, I think it's a significant change in how we're looking at this, so it's not just four times a year, it's throughout the year. The primary summer months, obviously, is what we're talking about. Depending on April, it's all cold in April, but definitely June, July, August, sometimes in August, that we really don't have much weed growth because it depends on the precipitation and things, so really changing how we look at weed enforcement. And this was really the direction of Jeff, the new DPDW director, felt this would be a more efficient way of looking at it than four times a year, driving around town.
It just looked like it was really stripped down, I mean, took out, which is, make it more clear and more easy to...
That was also part of the issue. What is a nonchalious weed, so we try to do some more clarification on those particular issues also.
I thought we changed that to eight inches, rather than 10, eight to the grass, in weeds.
In the council ordinance committee?
Yes, probably did that.
Let me check the minutes real quick of that, or the notes. I don't recall that being discussed.
I recall it went from 12, I thought, to 10, but I don't remember from 10 to 8, I would have guessed 8.
I don't recall. I don't believe we had discussed dropping it to 8 at that particular meeting, but it's obviously up to council's discretion.
I mean, eight inches can grow in three or four days, maybe, when we have great rain and precipitation, so I'm okay with 10, at least gives them a five or six day window, or a seven day window for that, but...
Well, they've also got the window of the seven day written notice.
Yeah.
So, there's also that window. So, there's the window for it to grow, and then notification, and then there's that opportunity. And the key here for us really is, we don't want to spend one hour cutting private property. Every hour that we cut private property, it means that we're not on public property, maintaining the property for the citizens that pay their taxes to maintain. So, that's not our intent, is to be on private property. So, would I leave that on the council's discretion as to whether or not, if they'd like to have a conversation about reducing that from 10 to 8?
10 is fine with me. I think since we've enacted the previous ordinance, we haven't had that many violations that way.
Well, we've cut it down.
Yeah.
There's still, there's still...
Not as much, not as much as... Well, and also, the costs associated with that, and not just being a cheap lawn service...
That's what it used to be, cheap lawn service. Very inexpensive lawn service.
Now, are we going to post this in paper?
All of the ordinance is required to be posted in paper, and they take it effect a certain, 10 days after posting?
10 days after the second...
10 days after that, we post all of those in newspaper. And we will obviously put those on Facebook, as well as on the website for citizens to see also.
Any other discussion? Can you please take the roll? Councilmember Hornball?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Temzary?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
And Councilmember Gustin?
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Consideration of introducing ordinance 1028 River Street Traffic Flow Parking and Amendments. In the late 1990s, the city was preparing to complete a downtown streetscape project as part of a combined sewer separation project. Included in the original plans were bump outs, traffic calming measures, and trees downtown. A referendum vote was put before city residents to prohibit trees from being placed in the downtown. This referendum passed, and a section C of ordinance 1028 was added. By law, section C could not be reversed for a two-year period. Having passed that time period requirement, council could now amend this section. The DDA Design Committee and a full DDA board approved the concept of placing trees back in the downtown area in large planters. Use of the planters would allow them to be removed for winter maintenance. This ordinance has been reviewed and supported by the council ordinance committee. As an ordinance, two separate readings are required. If this ordinance is introduced at this time, it could be adopted at the next regular meeting. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, the council will take action to introduce an ordinance amending Chapter 1028 Traffic Flow Parking and Amendments.
Support.
I have a motion by Councilmember Gustin, supported by Mayor Pro Temzary, to introduce this ordinance. Is there any discussion?
No, I think it's long overdue.
And I saw in the ordinance that it's still keeping the trees close to the buildings and away from the street. I was wondering if that was an issue, to be closer to the street, because it seemed like it would be more viewing as you're walking down the street, these planters, than if they are closer to the buildings.
That was one of the nice things about the discussion with the DPDW director, Jeff, being involved, and the planters give some options of being closer to the building, or, you know, placement is flexible, so...
How the ordinance is read, I thought it made it restrictive to closer to the building.
I don't believe so. Because we're really just removing section C of the particular ordinance. Thou shalt leave no trees in the sidewalk portion of the street, between Vision Street and Ice Street, except in the present rate of park. And any missing trees shall remain, but when they are removed because of deterioration, we shall not replace this area. The goal here really was just to get a lot of flexibility between the DDA and the Department of Public Works as to the location. If one location's not working for whatever particular reason, we have the opportunity to move them and find the right location for that.
By my understanding, there's going to be four to start with, four or five.
Do you want to rest that, please?
Sure. Right now, just due to funds that we have available, that we're going to start with around two to four of them, for right now, kind of see how things work.
Okay.
And then more money comes in, we'll definitely be able to kind of spread it out and do more projects down there, but with the fact that there are inquirers, it kind of gives us the flexibility to kind of figure out where the best locations are for these trees, and we can kind of move them as we see issues come up or arise, or whether property owners want to have more, and want trees, how many have trees in their place in front of the citizens minds.
Does this present an opportunity for, like, memorial funds?
Yes.
So, if someone wanted to sponsor a, one of the tree planters, or...
I actually had a phone call about a month ago from a lady who wanted to memorialize a friend who had passed away, and was going to contact her and let her know that instead of you doing bench downtown, which I think we have a lot of benches, that we could end up doing like towards a tree instead, to do a nice planter tree downtown.
Okay.
Very good.
I guess I'm referring to item E, that says, "Any planting along the street shall be cut back near the building line and not placed out near the curb line." That's what I was questioning.
Thank you for catching that, I did, we talked about the sign...
That I don't believe we changed it.
It didn't change, I mean, the actual location.
So, would that restrict the use of the...
This is the first time I've looked at this, but yeah, I would agree that if the trees were to be placed near the curb line, then...
They would be a violation of the ordinance.
Yeah, I agree with that, it's a violation of that provision.
And I don't think that's in the spirit of what we're trying to do.
Not at all, you're right. Thank you, Mayor.
Can we remove item E?
You could amend your motion to have that deletion also occur as part of the ordinance amendment.
Okay.
I'll take that.
I haven't seen it announced yet, because it's still going to be up to the DPDW and DDA to work out those related issues.
Well, interaction with the store owners and such, too. Got to keep them involved.
Absolutely.
So, what you mean, talking about, if you're claiming this would be a motion to amend the previous motion to add deleting section 1028 01B?
Okay. You make that motion, Mr. Go ahead, sit.
So, I'll make a motion to amend the motion to eliminate section 1028 01B in the... E. E, I'm sorry, E, E is an error.
Good support.
Support.
I have a motion by Councilmember Gustin to revise our motion, and supported by Councilmember Hornball. Is there any other discussion? Sign off, can you please take the roll? Mayor Pro Temzary?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Gustin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hornball?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Then you'd be voting now on the original motion as amended.
Okay. Is there any...
Do we need to make a new motion then, or is it okay? It's amended by version of the second motion.
Any other discussion? Can you please take the roll on that? Councilmember Gustin?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Temzary?
Yes.
Councilmember Hornball?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes. Thank you.
Consideration of applications to boards and commissions. The city clerk has taken action to advertise vacancies on the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, Downtown Development Authority, Historic District Commission, Non-Motorized Transportation Committee, Oil and Gas Investment Board, Parks and Beautification Commission, Ramsdale Theater Governing Authority, and the Zoning Board of Appeals. All appointments by the mayor are subject to the council's approval unless otherwise specified by statute or ordinance. Nominations for council appointments do not require second. After a member of council nominates an individual for appointment, council shall vote on the nomination. A majority vote in favor of the placement the nominee is required for appointment. The following applications have been received. For the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, there are two vacancies, three-year terms ending 6/30/17. Applicants must be city residents or have an interest in property in the city. This is a mayor appointment. We have two applicants, Don Cook, 1235 Greenridge Street, and Clinton McGyven Corpus of 5480 South Lake Shore Drive. I'd like to appoint Don Cook of 1235 Greenridge Street. Do we need support in that, or can we just vote?
We need support.
We need support.
And I think you have, then, it's always something the council approves, so if you appoint someone, I think, then, we haven't done this this way, but I think then the proper method would be for a council member to move to support the mayor's appointment, someone to support that, and then vote on that motion of support of your appointment.
Okay.
Support.
And I need support.
But I think, I think a motion to support, and then a support, we have a motion to support the bureau of appointments. We just need a second. And then a second.
You make a motion to support Don Cook.
And I will do so. I make a motion to support Don Cook.
Second.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Temzary to support Don Cook, supported by Councilmember Whitlock. Is there any discussion? Dak, can you please take the roll? Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Hornball?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Councilmember Gustin?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Temzary?
Yes.
Motion approved. I also like to appoint the second vacancy, Clinton McGyven Corpus of 5480 South Lake Shore.
I'll make a motion that we support the mayor's appointment of Clinton McGyven Corpus.
Support.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hornball, supported by Councilmember Gustin, to appoint Clinton McGyven Corpus to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. Is there any discussion?
He's not a property owner in the city?
But he has an interest.
What we've done in the past with this, and I don't have the specific language in there, but it's an interest in property, and what we've always treated that as, is if some professional person works in the city, and their employer owns the property, they have to consider their interest in property, that's a way we, that's the way we've sort of treated that.
Any other discussion?
No, a couple, we had the last one with Schwinn, I think it was. She lives in Onacama, and she was appointed to one of the boards, DDA, and she was removed.
Maybe we could pass on this, listen, let's pause the specific, I mean, we've got a summary of the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, we could, do you have the bylaws?
What was, under the original, I don't know, some of the bylaws, it's interesting.
Are you referring to Ms. Wildness?
Yes. Yes.
The DDA, the DDA is slightly different in the fact that the DDA has certain positions. You have to be a downtown property owner, you have to be a resident of the downtown, and there were several positions at large, so the DDA positions are different from the Brownfield. The Brownfield is more flexible, if you will, for the DDA, it's very specific about who they're trying to attract as part of that. But, which you are correct, that she did not qualify for that DDA position in one particular.
And that's a discussion that did come up in that interaction, though, was that each one of these commissions or authorities or have different bylaws of what their qualifications are. They're not all treated equal in the same, so I remember that discussion coming up.
Clinton being the executive director for the Manistee Housing Commission, we had interpreted that as having interest in the city, and her disposition as the executive director.
You know, as I'm looking at that, though, Councilmember Whitlock, I think I'd like to take a look at that, too, but I'll follow up after today's meeting and get with you on whether I can find some additional information that helps us understand.
Thank you. Is your recommendation that we table this, this approval?
I think you can go ahead and proceed, and, because historically, this is the way we've done this for this, I know this board, if there's some issue, then we can always root up at that. Thank you.
And I think he'd be fine if we had to come back and reboot him from the board, the understanding. Michelle, can you take the roll, please?
Councilmember Gudstead?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tamsary?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Downtown Development Authority, there are four vacancies. Two four-year terms ending 6/30/18, and two unexpired terms ending 6/30/16. At least three applicants must have an interest in property located in the downtown district. This is a mayor appointment. For one of the four-year vacancies, I'd like to appoint Barry Lynn, of 532 Fourth Street.
I'll make a motion we support the mayor's appointment of Barry Lynn, 532 Fourth Street, to the Downtown Development Authority.
Support.
The motion by councilmember Harmon, supported by councilmember Gudstead, to support Barry Lynn to a four-year term to the DDA. Is there any discussion?
Other than Barry, has served well on the DDA board in the past. As he mentions here, he believes he's the longest-serving currently on the board.
Signet, can you please take the roll?
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tamsary?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Gudstead?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. I'd like to appoint Valerie Bergstrom to the second four-year term. She's at 1224 Critter Trail.
And I'd like to make a motion to support the mayor's appointment, Valerie Bergstrom, 1224 Critter Trail, to the DDA board at-large position. Support.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tamsary, supported by councilmember Harmon, to appoint Valerie Bergstrom to a four-year term. Any discussion?
Is this the same as Mrs. Wild?
There was one...
The same?
There was one voter position that's at-large. And that's what she applied for.
Mm-hmm. But not a property owner in the DDA or...
She's not in the DDA. She's with the... What's her name?
There's at-large seats on the DDA board where you don't have to have...
You don't have to be a property owner or in downtown?
That's correct.
Okay. Have we done one of these, completed one of these votes like this before?
Actually, prior on the DDA board, Mr. Brower served as Northwest Bank. He was slightly outside of the DDA board boundaries and served on the DDA board for considerable amount of time. Eighteen years. Excuse me, eighteen years. Eighteen years.
Thank you.
Do we know how many at-large do the other two applicants?
We only can have one at-large appointment.
I don't think these other two then qualify. Sarah's four is...
Mr. Morris.
Three or four.
Right.
So it's two or three.
Pretty much three or two.
Because of you.
Two or four.
I'd like to appoint Sarah's four to the one expired term ending 6/30.
And I will make a motion to support the mayor's nomination.
Second.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tamsary, supported by councilmember Whitlock, to appoint Sarah's four, 325 First Street, to one of the unexpired terms ending 6/30/16 to the DDA. Is there any discussion? Michelle, can you please take the roll?
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tamsary?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
And councilmember Gudstead?
Yes.
Motion approved.
I'd like to appoint Todd Moore, post-op expat, 10/11, to the other unexpired term ending 6/30/16.
I'll make a motion we approve the mayor's appointment of Todd Moore.
Support.
The motion by councilmember Harmon, supported by Mayor Pro Tamsary, to appoint Todd Moore to one of the unexpired terms ending 6/30/16. Is there any discussion? Signet, can you please take the roll?
Councilmember Gudstead?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tamsary?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. The Historic Commission, there were no applicants. Non-motorized Transportation Committee, no applicants. The Oil and Gas Investment Board, there's one vacancy. It's a four-year term ending 6/30/18. This is a mayor appointment. I'd like to appoint Stephen Brower, 4102 College Avenue.
Support. The, I make a motion to support the appointment. Thank you.
Support the motion.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tamsary and support by councilmember Gudstead to appoint Stephen Brower to the Oil and Gas Investment Board for four-year term ending 6/30/18. Is there any discussion? Signet, can you please take the roll?
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tamsary?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
And councilmember Gudstead?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Parks and Beautification Commission, there are three vacancies. Three-year terms ending 6/30/17. At least two applicants must be city residents. Non-residents must own real estate in the city or own a business or profession having a licensed business location in the city. There are two applicants, Brittany Goda and Mark Tomaszewski. Unfortunately, Brittany, wire and tenants moving to the city, she's not in the city yet, and she will reapply at a later date. So that leaves Mark Tomaszewski at 106 Tammerock Street. I'd like to appoint two one and three-year terms ending 6/30/17.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Mark Tomaszewski to Parks and Beautification Commission.
Support.
I have a motion by councilmember Whitlock, supported by councilmember Harmon, to appoint Mark Tomaszewski to a three-year term ending 6/30/17 to the Parks and Beautification Commission. Is there any discussion? Signet, can you please take the roll?
Mayor Pro Tamsary?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Councilmember Gudstead?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Ramsdale Theater Governing Authority, three vacancies. Two three-year terms ending 6/30/17, and one unexpired term ending 6/30/15. At least two applicants must be city residents. This is a mayor appointment. We have one applicant, Brian Garcia, 2374 Atkins Road. I'd like to appoint him to one of the three-years terms ending 6/30/17.
I'll make a motion to support the mayor's appointment of Brian Garcia for the Ramsdale Theater Governing Authority.
Support.
I have a motion by councilmember Gudstead, supported by Mayor Pro Tamsary, to appoint Brian Garcia to a two, to a three-year term ending 6/30/17 to the Ramsdale Theater Governing Board. Any discussion? Signet, can you please take the roll?
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tamsary?
Yes.
Councilmember Gudstead?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Zoning Board of Appeals, there's one vacancy. It's a three-year term ending 5/31/17. Applicants must be city residents. This is a mayor appointment. We have one applicant, Greg Schindelbeck, of 420 Cedar Street, and like to appoint to a three-year term ending 5/31.
I'll make a motion to support the mayor's appointment of Craig Schindelbeck, 420 Cedar Street, to a three-year term ending 5/31/17.
Second.
I have a motion by councilmember Harmon, supported by councilmember Whitlock, to appoint Craig Schindelbeck to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term ending 5/31/17. Any discussion? Can you please take the roll?
Councilmember Gudstead?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tamsary?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
And councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Take barely enough. Notice, communications, and announcements. A report from the Brownfield Consultant. A regular part of each council meeting is report from a cooperating agency, organization, or department. Tonight, we'll leave it for Mr. Teague.
Good evening. I'm Kef Taxiaris on behalf of the City of Mestee Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. And I'm here tonight to give you an update on the business of the Brownfield Authority. It has been two years since the last update, and a number of things have happened, and we have some new members. And therefore, I will give you a quick overview of the authority. It is, it was established in 2006 by city council. We have seven members, and all listed here. And the members who represent different interests and expertise. We have people who are familiar with real estate, with banking, with industrial activities. We have a representative of the Works for the Tribe. We have engineer, and also Clinton, MacIven Corpus is the chair that represents the housing, low-income housing interest in the city. Ed Bradford is the administrator of the Brownfield Authority. Denise Blakesley, the recording secretary. And I support the authority members, the administrator, in the day-to-day functions of the Brownfield Authority. The mission of the authority is to facilitate redevelopment of brownfield properties. Until last year, the brownfield was a property that was contaminated, functionally obsolete, or blighted. Since last year, Act 31 Brownfield Law, as we call it, added historic properties to qualify as brownfields. And that's significant for a city like Mestee because we have a lot of historic properties that are not contaminated. They are not functionally obsolete or blighted. But the owners or future developers may want to redevelop them. Therefore, they would qualify, those historic properties would qualify for some of the brownfield redevelopment incentives. The functions and what the BRA, the Brownfield Authority, can do, we call it BRA Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, we can, or the Brownfield Authority can do, can deal with environmental assessments and receive, pursue and receive state, federal, local grants and loans for redevelopment purposes. The BRAs, most BRAs do capture tax increments that we use to reimburse public or private parties for redevelopment, eligible redevelopment expenses. The BRA can own and mortgage or lease real estate. It can borrow, they can issue bonds. So they have pretty broad authorities to do whatever is necessary to assist with redevelopment of properties within the jurisdiction. In this case, this is a city BRA. It can always, only operate within the city limits. The City of Mestee Brownfield Redevelopment Authority has, over the years, different funding sources. We have received brownfield grants and loans from the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality, from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. We have some small fees through, from applicants who apply to receive tax increment financing for the projects. And we're in the process of establishing a lococide remediation revolving fund in which we can bring funds that can be used for future redevelopment activities. And early on in the life of the Brownfield Authority, we utilize a small amount of city general funds. And occasionally, the funds, this source of funding is utilized until we can repay with grants and loans. I will be showing you a number of photographs of properties that we have worked on over the years. The... The pointer's in the mirror, right?
I can't see.
Oh, okay. The Hotel Northern, the Owens Construction Company or building. Some of the properties we worked on over the years. The, some of the major funding that the Brownfield Authority has received are the EPA grants. We had two grants starting in 2007, completed, well, we completed this month. We brought in about $390,000 that was used for doing assessments, brownfield labs, surveys, and related redevelopment activities at over 36 sites within the city. The latest is the work, the Phase II environmental assessment that was done for the North Channel Outlet property on the upper left. And with state grants and loans that we received, the amounts are shown there. We did two projects, the former General Capital property. We helped the American Materials, Re-Lifey, with establishing their operation there after remediating some of the problems, environmental problems that used to be there. And then downtown at 334 River Street site, that's the old Red Apple. A private developer was assisted with a state grant to do remediation. I think we talked about that the last time we met. And towards then, I will give you an update of what's going on with this property, with that property. The EPA brownfield grants that really have been the bulk of the funding that we received are focused in essentially three areas in the city. The peninsula on the east side of River Street, the downtown district, and the industrial corridor in, on the south side and north of US 31 on, along the railroad tracks. When we started on these, with these grants, we estimated we would be dealing with about 20, 25 sites around the, around the city. We were able to address 36, 37 different properties. And the way that we deal with, with properties that, where we do environmental assessments or provide other redevelopment services, that's based on requests by property owners or developers or prospective developers who have interest on the property and they want to know what the environmental conditions are before they proceed with the project. to know what the environmental conditions are before they proceed with, with the project. The, some of the recent Phase One Environmental Assessments we had done, and Phase One Environmental Assessment involves research on the background of a property. We review databases, we do site inspections, historic records from the museum, and other sources. And then we determine what are the potential environmental problems for that particular property. These phase does not involve any, any sampling of soil or groundwater. So we have worked on the sand pit that Jeff Senk has on the south side of town, 31. Another property that Mr. Senk has in the peninsula, the Ashton and Cross. The Veterans Group has asked for assistance with, assistance with looking at the environmental conditions of the Veterans Memorial Park. A new owner of the property, the former Hotel Chipola, which is across from the City Marina, the vacant property, asked for a Phase One Environmental Assessment, which we did. And the latest one we completed would be at the Hopkinson's property. We have started, we also do initial assessments, however, either because the owner doesn't want to proceed any further, or because the USCPA finds that there is, that the property owner is a liable party. That's where we stop. We start with the Douglas Park and also with Duffy Park on the north side of town. However, because both of those, both of those properties are owned by the city, the USCPA found that the city is a liable party, and they did not allow us to use federal funds. So that's where we stop. The, the next step, after we do a Phase One Environmental Assessment, is to do some sampling. And the sampling depends on what potential environmental issues we find through the Phase One Environmental Assessment. And then we also do what's called baseline environmental assessments that provide the future owners with liability protection from past contamination. And on the left, there are photos of properties where we have done sampling. Upper left is the MAPS Building, that's the Menestee Area Public School, the training facility in the northwest corner of Washington and Fifth Avenue, because that used to be a garage. The middle picture is inside one of the buildings at Sen's Marina. And the bottom is, the bottom photo is the former, I think it was something Auto Parts. But that's the property that the new owner started the.
Quilting.
Business. And so in addition to those properties, we worked at the former Tascon Grill to facilitate the development of the Bluefish Restaurant. We've done environmental assessments that involve sampling of the former Hotel Northern, the bookmark, also the properties of the Housing Commission, the Century Terrace in Arbor View. We talked about the 166 Cleveland Street side, that's the bottom left. And then Vance Towing, on behalf of Vance Towing, we did sampling at that property across from General Chemical and Ruth Riley, prior to them moving into the property. And then most recently, we completed environmental assessments at the North Channel Outlet. We have stretched what we do with, especially with the EPA grants. So we provide additional services to facilitate redevelopment. An example would be on the upper left, the former Menestee Blading Building is going to be demolished. So we helped them with doing some structural assessments, topographic surveys, and some sampling at the Veterans Memorial Park. We did a couple of graphic surveys so that they can do the design for the improvements. I will talk next about the South Washington area brownfield plan. In, for the Bluefish property, we helped them with applying for grants. We did asbestos surveys at the MAPS Building and also at the Iron Works to support the community kitchen that is going there. And also, we assisted the Alliance for Economic Success and the owner of the Iron Works Building with nominating, nominating the property for a large project. I think it's known by now, it's a large brewing company out of West Coast that is looking at to put a facility in Michigan. And the Iron Works property has been shortlisted. It's one of the 11 properties around the country, so we're waiting for, for the final selection. Two years ago, when we gave you an update of the activities of the Brownfield Authority, how am I doing? Getting close. We, on the, the 334 River Street side, that's the Red Apple, was in pretty bad shape. You can see on the upper left, the, under the property, under the building was a lot of debris, contaminated soils, oil, coal, fly ash, anything you can imagine. It was a pretty nasty site. Then with assistance from, with a state, from a state grant, we started doing the remediation on the bottom left, then the demolition of part of the building. And that's where, on the right is the, on the upper right is the exterior of the building under development. And then a shot of the interior. The developer is expected to finish the work by the, by fall, this fall. The one thing we're working, the Brownfield Authority is working on right now is a brownfield plan for an area that will include the River Park place, those are the Anphines condos, the North Channel Outlet, property to the north of the North Channel Building and to the west that the owners acquired recently. And would also include the Veterans Memorial Park and potentially the city lot on the left. If you look at the middle area photo, okay, that is the, okay, that's the, can you show the, okay, River Park to the, to the middle there. To the north is, okay, that is the city, that's the city lot. Then to the north of the River Park is the North Channel. To the north. And then around it, around the two properties, there is vacant, two vacant lots that were acquired by the developers in order to consolidate the property and to facilitate the development of the two buildings, primarily as related to parking. The, the brownfield plan is being prepared currently by the Brownfield Authority and the Development Group. As you know, both of those buildings have been underutilized, vacant for some time. They're both blighted. They will require a lot of work. We have completed assessments and various surveys through the EPA grant, including a structural survey of the building, the North Channel Building, and asbestos and lead. And the plan currently is to create residential units, both rentals and owner-occupying, as well as some commercial spaces, that's offices, and a business to be announced, hopefully in the next few weeks. This brownfield plan then would allow for reimbursement of environmental expenses, including asbestos and lead-based paint abatement, removal and capping of contaminated soils, dealing with blighted conditions. And it would also allow the city and the DDA to construct public infrastructure improvements, including the pump station upgrades to the west of the buildings, sewer replacement, addition of city water, and street skate along the first block of Washington Street, and some improvements to the Veterans Memorial Park. It is possible to construct and fund public infrastructure improvements and have it paid through tax increment financing, tax increments that would be generated from the two buildings once they're complete. Kind of an overview of this plan, which will be coming, will be going, will be acted upon by the Brownfield Authority in, I believe, July meeting. And it will be coming to you sometime in July. There will be some discussions before that, because there are a number of issues that need to be addressed. And we'll also have discussions with the DDA, excuse me, about it. So you're going to hear more about this. That is then of the update. This is a test. Probably there is at least one member or two members that know what this building is.
It's the channel.
That's right. This is the, the former Menestee Furniture Complex that went from, all the way from the river up to Fifth, yeah, Fifth Avenue. And on the left, the building on the left is where now is the River Park Building. Then there is an empty lot, empty space between. And then you can see the North Channel is this building here. And then the buildings to the right, including the old Beesou Theater, those have been demolished over the years.
The white building was a barber shop.
The Beesou Theater then was.
Right on the corner.
Other side.
Yeah. Around the corner of Washington and Fifth Avenue, there was a barber shop. What about that? Girls Barber Shop.
Yeah. Now, we did find some old photographs that showed an entrance for the Beesou Theater, both on Washington and on Fifth. So, anyway, can I answer any questions or clarify anything?
Lot of exciting things happening. We just have to be patient.
Well, yes, and it takes time, it takes investment, and perseverance.
Thank you, T.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move back to concerns and comments. Citizen comment, this is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments, which are limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Is there anyone who'd like to comment? Yes, sir.
My name is Dave Story, Long Island Park, Terry Street. Anyway, I was there a couple of weeks ago, we talked about my lunch wagon down there. I had a little on. You said you were going to discuss it.
I have discussed it with you, Mr. Story.
So we had to talk about our trailers, and we just, I don't know.
What we talked about, you and I talked about recently was that we have two other businesses down there, and the plan was not to have a third, your lunch wagon down there. That's what you and I discussed within the last couple of days.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, please come forward, state your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Karen Kuzinski Goodman, and I live at 1925 12th Street. And I don't have a comment on the business, but I wanted to come introduce myself, since I am one of the candidates running for county commissioner of the sixth district, which is west of Maple and the north side. And I just wanted to say hello and just let you know that I'm interested in working with council. I think it's an important piece of representation for those in the district that I represent. And I just wanted to let you know my commitment to this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Yes, please come forward.
Ready for Q3 67, the Old Street? Madam Mayor, do you have a seat for a little bit on the budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay. First off, I've been paying taxes in this community for over 50 years. Now, and I had to go to work at the age of 14, seven days a week, and I've worked seven days a week most of my life. You people up there draw more than I get for social security. Most city have good paying jobs, good benefits. Couple have good pensions, good benefits. And I'm 81 years old, and I'm running out of gas. So after the end of June, which will close up the greenhouses, I will all on a vehicle work seven days a weekend. And now, you're going to raise the water and sewer rates eight point some percent, and that's going to come out of my budget, as long as you're spending the city budget. You're going to hire an extra policeman, so that's going to raise my taxes. Now, I only got $12 a month raise on social security, so you're more than got that done. And now, you're going to, they're talking about more taxes for fixing more streets in the community. Where are us, us little people supposed to get this money from? We worked all our lives, we hadn't got to work at 14 or 16, not my choice, but we had to. So we never got the education that you folks all got. You did good paying job, good benefits. I have no insurance other than my Medicare, and I can't afford insurance, so I can't get sick. And at 81 years old with no prescription medicines, and feeling pretty good, I consider myself dog unlucky. But how long can that last? So now, you people up there are elected by the public to serve the public. And some of you are doing a poor job, and some of you, as I have been talking about, and I said, well, I'll tell you what you're doing. and I said, well, I'll tell you what you do. When there's an election, and there's somebody running against somebody up there that you think has been there too long, vote for the opposite person. The only thing is, I've been voting since I was 21 years old every election, but these people, they're too busy to get off their duffs and get out their vote. So they have no right to complain about what you're doing to them. But I do. Like I say, and I served this community well. I served two years there. I served many years on the climate commission and on the Board of Appeals. I served my community well. And I don't think that I should be getting treated the way I am, because you people here are supposed to work for us out there in the public. But what are you doing? You're giving the administration everything they want, and you left the bond debt alone. And now they get all that investor, they got a big chunk of money coming in, and wanted to care about their sewer. No, they let you talk, then you let them talk you into putting that in capitol boots. Now, they got almost all oil and gas fund invested, there's a big chunk of money coming in, but that's spent 14 years down the road. What are you thinking? Think about us people up there, so you don't have to keep raising our taxes and our water and sewer rates. You don't have to give them anything, everything they want. You give the city manager a good rating every year on a pay raise. The only thing he's good for is spending money, and he's doing a dead gum good job of it. So now, I think that it's time that you people start thinking about what you can do for us people out there in the community that are in the shape that I'm in right now. And I, I've never complained too much before, but I have to complain now, because what am I going to do after the end of June when I cannot no longer supplement my social security? And I think.
Thank you. So anyone else? I think none, we'll move on to officials and staff. Sweet clerk?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Sweet Neander.
Just a couple of quick items, Your Honor. One, tomorrow, the electricity at City Hall will be shut off for pretty much the entire day. We're switching the generator over tomorrow, working with Consumers Energy and Top Line and to switch that generator over. So City Hall will be open, but the cover will be off. We were informed the other day that finally, from Senator Levin's office, that we have received the land and water conservation grant for the River Park Playground. We've been talking about this for 18, 20 months. It's been sitting in the Department of the National, the National Department of Parks Department for probably six months, and finally that's moving forward. So happy to inform you of that. And I think maybe we need to possibly have a conversation, a work session about board and commission applications. This evening, you had seven of them put on your desk right before the meeting. We've always put them on your desk right before the meetings. We have always done that since I've been here the past 12 and a half years. It appears to me, though, that some of you probably would like to have more time to review those applications than what you've had doing so. So I wondered if we could, want to have a, just a brief work session discussion discussing that. Maybe it comes in terms that maybe they aren't put in front of you like that, those move forward to a next meeting, potentially allowing you some time and opportunity. We want to be respectful of the citizens who are volunteering for these positions, but also we want to make sure that you have all of the information you need to fill those positions. So it just kind of occurred to me tonight that that may be a good work session discussion. And we may continue to do it the exact same way we are, or we may want to look at that a little bit differently, but I think that'd be a good work session discussion moving forward. Thank you.
The attorney?
No, thank you, Your Honor.
My name is Director?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Public Safety Director?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
City Engineer?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Ms. Melton?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mayor Proton, sir?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Ms. Member Willis?
Yes. A couple of months ago, I brought this up about the recycle over at the city garage, that there were, we were getting garbage piled up, people putting materials there again. Over the weekend, I went and did my recycling, and there were broken up chairs and bags of crap laying. It's costing the city money to get rid of this, so please stop. I would, I would like to see a fine of $1,000 if somebody gets caught doing this.
I know we spoke about, and I appreciate that you bring that up in the market, we spoke about some alternatives to that recycle program, whether it's limited access or things like that, and maybe if it continues, there's, we need to look at some of those things.
Not only, not only that, there are still a lot of city resident, there are a lot of residents from outside the city coming and disposing of their waste recyclables there also, and the city residents are paying for it.
That's a good tip.
If, if we could get any type of update on the 12th Street issue?
Sure. 12th Street, we have, I believe, I believe we sent emails out today, actually trying to reschedule that meeting. Let me just double check real quick, I believe.
Yeah, I got PD emails.
Went out today. So we had contacted the property owners, three property owners. This is Robison, this is Robison, the Edmonds, the middle and Strenk, Edmondson, thank you, Edmondson and Steinbergs are the three impacted property owners. The Edmondsons had indicated that they weren't interested in, in looking at the plans and moving forward. I believe that's a position of Mr. Robison also. However, the Steinbergs contacted me via telephone indicating that they were in support of making the improvements to that work. We are trying to, at this point in time, schedule a meeting. Councilmember Honkow, Councilmember Whitmouth were included on that email that went out today. It included Mr. Walker, the fellow charter township supervisor, John Chandler, the MAPS superintendent, Howard Boss, the business manager, Mark Berstrom, the county commissioner that had been involved in that, I believe Jeff McCullough from the Department of Public Works, the Road Commission manager, Mr. Schlot. So my goal is to come back together with those folks and look at what some of the options are, and make some plans moving forward, whatever that may be.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have nothing, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
So, great. Your turn.
For them, you know, duckies got intensives on those Saturdays and those evenings.